Baltimore City Budget and Appropriations -- Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee were reconvening for three bills. Number one, the ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2019 year. Number two, annual property tax for fiscal year 2019, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the mayor and city council of Baltimore for the period July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, providing for estimated billing pursuant to state law and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. And number three, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal year 2019, providing for certification of the approved budget to the state superintendent of schools, and providing for a special effective date. My name is Eric Costello, I'm Chair of the Committee from the 11th District. I'm joined to my left by Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, Councilman Brandon Scott, 2nd District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District. Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District. And then to my right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm joined to my immediate right by Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee. We're also joined by Rebecca Tab from Council President Jack Young's office, as well as Lester Davis and Kara Kuntz. We are also joined by Karen Stokes and Karan Banks, representing Mayor Catherine Pugh. We are here tonight for the State's Attorney. Before we begin, there have been a number of comments made in the media and behind closed doors about the extent to which I'm able to hold an unbiased hearing because I'm supporting another candidate in the State's Attorney's race. That is patently false, and instead of giving those accusations any legs, I am going to opt to have the Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, conduct the hearing this evening. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Madam State's Attorney, thank you for joining us this evening. I've been made aware that you have, I think, three slides. We don't have the monitor available this evening, so if you would, I guess, take us through your presentation, make it maybe 10, 15 minutes, and then we'll just entertain questions from the various council members.
That works.
I'm sorry, and if you could, before you start, if you could introduce your team, and those who are seated can just signify by raising their hands, and then those in the back maybe can stand some.
Can I have them just introduce themselves? Does that work?
If they have access to a mic, then they can just introduce themselves.
Okay, that works.
Yes.
No, I'm fine. Thank you. Do you want to start?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. We can start down on the row, if you want to start. RC, did you want to start?
Good evening, City Council Members. My name is Arcilia Green, and I'm the Deputy Director of the Victim/Witness Unit of the State's Attorney's Office.
Hi, I'm Mike Shatzow, I'm the Chief Deputy State's Attorney.
Camille Blake Foul, Chief of Administration.
Good evening, Robert Wojcicki, Assistant State's Attorney in the Juvenile Division.
Lisa Smith, Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs.
Hi, I'm Jan Bledsoe, I'm one of the deputies.
Good morning, Darren O'Brien, good afternoon. Darren O'Brien.
Darren O'Brien, Assistant State's Attorney and Director of Information Technology.
Good evening, Patricia DeMayo, Deputy State's Attorney.
Good evening, Thalderyx, Deputy State's Attorney.
Good evening, Jessica Bose, I am a community liaison, I also work with the Policy and Legislative Affairs Unit.
Good evening, Karan Bray, Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Let me begin by thanking Mr. Vice Chair and Mr. Chair for my request, allowing me the opportunity to participate by rescheduling my agency's hearing for this evening. Despite numerous external challenges, my administration has been steadfastly committed to accountability, professionalism, and transparency since taking office in 2015. These values are keys to unlocking a future where community confidence in the criminal justice system is restored, violent repeat offenders are held accountable, and our communities feel safe again. We continue to address our city's public safety challenges, and I'm grateful for your support, each and every one of you, as my prosecutors continue to work tirelessly with citizens, community partners, the police, and other public partners to combat the current crime increase. Following my opening remarks, if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Chair, and my Chief of Administration, Camille Blake Foul, will dive into the specifics about the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget, but I'd like to use my time this evening to provide you with a top-level view of how we've prioritized the spending in my office and to more effectively prosecute perpetrators of census crime, better serve victims and witnesses, of course, and run a more efficient and effective administration. When you look at the first slide, and we don't have the luxury of looking at it, but I'm sure that you have it.
We all have copies, I believe.
Okay, great. The prosecution of criminals, the prosecution of criminals across Baltimore City is a priority of our agency, with a recommended $34,300,905 allocated for fiscal year 2019. This includes $7.2 million in grant funding dollars that funds 36 of our State's Attorney's Most Experienced Prosecutors, who staff the homicide, major investigations, and gun violence enforcement divisions, and the charging unit. It's important to note to the Committee, ultimately, city funding is not keeping pace with the demand on our prosecutors. In fiscal year 19, general fund dollars allocated to this service increased just .8 percent, which is down from 1.38 percent in fiscal year 18. Additionally, I would also note to the council that state funding for the State's Attorney's Immediate Charging Unit, the Juvenile Division, has been cut effective as of October 2018. Nonetheless, as State's Attorney, my top priorities have been targeting violent repeat offenders, building public trust in law enforcement, and running a transparent and accountable administration. This has resulted in an overall 95% felony conviction rate year-to-date. In conjunction with our partners in law enforcement, the service supports the State's Attorney's Office investigations and prosecution of all criminal cases occurring within the city of Baltimore. In 2017, I would like you all to note, we prosecuted over 41,000 cases, including 3,800 felonies in Circuit Court. Since 2015, we have successfully convicted every single public enemy number one that has been brought to trial, and collectively, their sentences include six life sentences plus 700 years. Over the past year, my talented and dedicated Assistant State's Attorneys continue to zealously prosecute cases and fight on behalf of all victims and witnesses of crime. Some highlights I would like you guys to note is the Felony Trial Division and Special Victims Unit closed last year with a 92% and a 94% conviction rate respectively. Through our Criminal Strategies Unit, we launched Community Court Watch, a web-based tool that allows citizens to track case information for crimes occurring in their neighborhoods. The Conviction Integrity Unit, the only conviction integrity unit in the state of Maryland, with a program dedicated to investigating the wrongful convictions and cases, exonerated Lamar Johnson last year, who served nearly 14 years in prison for a murder he did not commit. My conviction integrity is expanding, my conviction integrity unit is actually expanding this year with the addition of an investigator dedicated to investigating claims of wrongful conviction. We continue, as a result of one of the largest police corruption scandals in the history of this country, to have to review thousands of cases impacted by the indictments and convictions of eight members of the Baltimore Police Department Gun Trace Task Force. Clearly, you know, at a time when our, the need for us to prosecute these criminals, ultimately, city funding is, I think it's really important for you guys to understand all of those things that I've highlighted, city funding is not keeping pace with the demand of our prosecutors. As was noted previously, general fund dollars allocated to this service increased by a mere .8 percent. When we talk about victims and witnesses, that's the second slide that we would go over, and that's the second service that our office supports in Baltimore City, victim-witness services are paramount to any successful prosecution strategy, where the home of the stop-stitcher mentality, where the stop-stitcher mentality began, and I recognize the tremendous amount of work that we all need to do to break down those barriers of distrust that exist between community and our law enforcement. Therefore, the $3,682,390 is recommended to fund full-time personnel who assist victims and witnesses of crime in Baltimore City by providing counseling and guidance, notification of rights, support in court, monetary resources, and reimbursement where needed. For witnesses of crime determined to be at risk of intimidation or retribution, the division provides relocation assistance, temporary and permanent new housing, and other limited forms of financial support, including vouchers for food and travel expenses. Again, I would like this committee to note, in 2016, the State's Attorney's Office relocated 125 victims, witnesses, and their families. Over the past two years, the demand for relocation assistance has increased by more than 30%. Over the past five years, the demand has more than doubled. The proposed fiscal year budget includes this year a $350,000, $350,000 in increased funding for this service, for victim-witness relocation. We're thankful to our city delegation in Annapolis and the members of the Maryland General Assembly, because of the partnership, this allocation is a one-time bridge funding, as legislation passed during the 2018 Maryland Legislative Session will provide additional funding to the State's Attorney's Office for victim-witness protection and relocation beginning in fiscal year 2020 and extending through fiscal year 2023. Victim-witness renovation, I think it's also worthy of noting that we were able, understanding that we have to utilize public-private partnerships, understanding the scarcity of resources. My office has increased the grant funding in my office by more than 31%. We try to develop additional sort of public-private partnerships, and I'm extremely grateful that this past year, we were able to collaborate with an architectural firm that's called Design Angels of America to renovate the victim-witness waiting room, and I know that, and I've said this before, that may sound trivial, but this is an important sort of function, and that this is where, if you can imagine being a victim or witness of a carjacking or an attempted murder, and having to walk the halls with the individual that you've accused of that offense, their friends, going into a dark, dank, dingy room for hours on end with strangers until your case is called, it can be anxiety-provoking. And so what we've done in partnering with Design Angels of America is to base the design based upon therapeutic design, so everything from the color of the floor to the now living green wall that's plastered in the middle of that space is based upon those that have experienced trauma and how to make them feel more secure in those environments. Understanding and also recognizing, Mr. Vice Chair, that crime control and prevention is extremely important, especially when we consider the rise in youth violence in our city. As prosecutors, it's, our role is not exclusive to the courtroom, which is why we created the Policy and Legislative Affairs Division, as well as the Crime Control and Prevention Division. Last year, we were successful in Annapolis, and we got the Repeat Sexual Predator Prevention Act passed, thanks to bipartisan support, which will allow us to introduce evidence of defendants' other relevant crimes and bring Maryland's Rules of Evidence in line with the federal standards, as well as 37 other states. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to touch upon our efforts to not only serve city youth in the prevention of violence, but to take a holistic approach to prosecution of crime in a city where 24% of Baltimore's population lives in poverty and 35% of children live below poverty. Recognizing the need to holistically address the systemic economic causes and root causes as to why crimes take place, this is why the Crime Control and Prevention Division was created. In 2015, shortly following the unrest, we implemented a program called Aim to Be More, an alternative to incarceration program modeled after nationally-established best practices in law enforcement, which is dedicated to putting the lives of first-time nonviolent felony drug offenders back on track, where upon successful completion of the program, they're given a job and an opportunity to change their lives. I'm proud to report, we are hosting our next and our first graduation of Aim to Be More participants on June 12 of next week. Because we recognize the need to get to the young folks before they get to the criminal justice system, we continue to invest in our limited resources, our limited resources in youth programming. In 2017, the Junior State's Attorney Program, which exposes 8th and 9th graders to careers in the criminal justice system, welcomed 55 participants and was able to pay these young bright stars for the first time in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development through Youth Works. This year, we received more than 350 applicants for this program, and we're scheduled to start our largest cohort of students later this month with more than 55 young people. And again, it was thanks to the support of members of the City Council, as well as Mr. President. Also, this past year, we had the Great Expectations, which introduces 4th grade students to careers in the criminal justice system. We expanded its footprint to three additional schools, Matthew Henson, Gilmore, and City Springs. And lastly, our Be More Pop-Ups, which provided alternative activities for more than 2,500 young people on every Friday night between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00. That's when we looked and we saw that there was a drastic increase in the number of youth violence, and thankfully, it was highly successful. We had more than 31 public-private partnerships, and because of the success, we continued the Baltimore Pop-Ups during the school year. We will be re-implementing the Baltimore Pop-Ups, thanks to our partner organizations, as of next week. And as you can see, we've had a very busy 18 months under my administration, and although we are comparatively small-city agency, we're tasked with an enormous amount of responsibility. I can tell you that 90% of our budget is comprised of personnel costs. If we seek cuts, we will have to reduce staffing, at a time when the crime rate and record caseloads are already a challenge. As you know, due to the volume and complexities in our city, there's no other operation like ours in the state of Maryland, and I just want to thank all of you for all that you do in supporting our efforts to fairly deliver justice as citizens of Baltimore. Unless you have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Ms. Blankfall, my Chief Administration, for a more detailed presentation, or if you had any specific questions. Additionally, as you have mentioned, my whole team is here to answer any sort of questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Madam State's Attorney. Would it be possible for you to submit to this committee a written copy of your testimony this evening?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Council President, I believe Council President has a few questions.
Thank you. First of all, Madam State's Attorney, I want to thank you for your advocacy on behalf of young people with the Junior State's Attorney Program that my office has partnered with you on many occasions, and also for, you know, being available whenever we call you for things that's important to my office. You have been greatly, you've been a real true partner there. But I have three questions, I guess, whoever you designate to answer them, and it's dealing with, the first one is Service 781 on page 488, Volume 2, y'all might not have it, of the budget book. This service references forecasting, monitoring, and managing expenditures amongst other responsibilities. There are no performance metrics included in the budget document. Can you explain your forecasting and monitoring efforts and all the metrics that you keep that should be included in this budget document?
Sure. Camille can answer that for you, Mr. President.
You have the book?
Do you have a copy of the budget book?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Madam, I'm going to defer.
Thank you, Council President, for your time. I believe that the Budget Director can chime in as well, but as I understand it, there are no outcome measures for administration under any agency, so we--
Well, we ask in all agency the same question.
Right, and so we comport our practices with those of the other agencies in that we don't provide any outcome-related results or performance measures against which we evaluate the success of that particular service, so that's why you don't see any here.
Okay, well, we ask the Budget, we ask the Budget Director to make sure that each agency do that for future reference in the budget, so you need to relate to all the agencies, and we expect to see that information.
Mr. President, can I interject? But in addition, there are no performance measures for any of the service categories.
Right, so we--
I mean, so it's not just that one.
That's right. So we are one of a handful of agencies that are exempt from the outcome-based performance measures, method of evaluating budgetary dollars, and so we aren't required to provide performance measures. I don't know if there are, which other agencies are exempt from outcome-based performance measures, but that's why we are--
We're asking that none be exempt.
And while Bob is getting ready to ask that, do you hold yourself to any other measures? I mean, do you measure yourself?
Can I, to answer the first question, that's accurate. So traditionally, we have not asked for performance measure, I mean, we've asked, but we haven't required performance measures for elected officials, so if there's anything you can speak to about some of the measures that you look at internally, definitely happy to hear that, but we don't publish those in the book.
Mrs. Semeney, you know that we ask every agency to come in here, to have that available for us in the budget books, and we expect to see that.
So can I clarify? You said you ask, but you don't require. What's that mean?
So when we started our outcome-based budgeting process, we asked agency, you know, sheriff, State's Attorney, Mayor's Office, City Council, elected officials, if they had measures that they could, they could use them and publish them, but across the board, we have not published them in the book. So we still ask and expect that they're overseeing their budget, overseeing their performance, we just haven't published them in the book.
Okay. All right, my second question is on page 491, that's Witness, Victim and Witness Services. The budget document shows increased funding from the federal government for fiscal year 18 and 19. Can you explain what the increased funding provides for?
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to address that. We are really excited that the mayor has recommended a $350,000 one-time allotment to allow our office to meet the fiscal needs of the victim and witness relocation efforts that we have undertaken for many years. As you may recall from last year, we continually overspend on that line item because the, in the last five years, those, the need in victim-witness has more than doubled, and so we, over the years, have not seen an increase consistent with our needs. And so with the help of the Mayor's Office and others, we were able to identify these issues in a real way and successfully receive those recommended funds.
But I think if we got more funding for witness protection, we can get a lot more of these crimes solved in Baltimore City, because when I talk to citizens, they don't mind coming and sharing information, but they're concerned about the welfare of not only themselves, but their family members who should be relocated with them. So if anything that we can do to talk to our federal partners and our state partners to get more money into witness protection, it would help us drive down crime in Baltimore City.
Well, I'm excited to, thank you for your comments, Chair. I'm excited to say, President, that we, in fact, do have an allocation coming over the next four years from the state. The Maryland General Assembly voted to include in its state budget between FY '20 and '23, $360,000 a year, in addition to the funds that we already get under the mayor's recommended budget, to allow us to continue to address the very concerns you raised.
But I still don't think that's enough, because if--
We agree.
If we're going to drive down crime in Baltimore City, people who come forward have to have the expectation that we're going to be able to relocate them and their family, because if Leon calls on me, I'm just using an example, and my guys know that Leon told on me, not only are they going to get Leon, they're going to get Leon's family as well. You know what happened to that young lady, okay? That was caught up with something that went on with her sibling. So these are the kind of things that we want to make sure we have ample funding for, so that people can come and tell us what they've seen, so that we can get these criminals off the street. So I think there should be more money, and we're willing to help in any way we can, not city resources, but talking with the state and federal folk to get more money for relocation.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, and my final question for tonight would be on the same service, 781.
781?
781, Volume 2, page 488. The budget document on page 483 states that your office is receiving $35,000 for operating costs associated with storing and evaluating footage from the police body cameras. Can you explain the policy and procedure for storing and evaluating body camera footage? And can your office provide data on your ongoing progress reviewing body camera footage?
Absolutely. For that, I will turn to my colleague Darren O'Brien, who can speak a little bit more in-depth about exactly how our office currently processes and stores body worn camera footage.
I need to repeat the question?
Good afternoon. Sure.
Okay. Can you explain the policy and procedure for storing and evaluating body camera footage? And can your office provide data on your ongoing progress reviewing body camera footage?
Absolutely. So as you may know, there's approximately over 100,000 pieces of footage that have been produced since--
If you can just elevate the mic for us, please.
Yeah. Thank you. So as you may know, since the beginning, there's over 100,000 pieces of footage that have been processed and forwarded to, or from BPD to the State's Attorney's Office, and that happens on a daily basis. So the process is, after an arrest, that footage is packaged by BPD by CC number and then pushed to the State's Attorney's Office for review by our unit, Evidence Review Unit, and from that point forward, it's then organized and indexed into a case management system and in Axon.com, and that is how we review it.
Okay. Would you be able to provide the data to this committee?
Oh, the processing? Sure, absolutely. Not offhand right now, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Marguerite, that's the question.
Mr. President, I would just add to that. In 2017, we processed approximately 104,000 body worn camera videos, and at the current pace in which we are acting in 2018, we'll likely receive upwards of 111,000 videos to process by the year's end. This budget includes that $35,000 increase in this service to address operating costs associated with evaluating the storage of body worn camera footage, but we will certainly get you that additional information to tell you the details around it.
All right. It needs to come to the Budget Committee. It needs to come to the Budget Committee.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we didn't give you an opportunity to respond to the question related to what internal measures do you use, because, I mean, that would have been a perfect example of the amount of body worn camera footage that you review, and I guess your goals, targets as it relates to that. Can you share with us some of the internal measures that you use to, you know, measure your effectiveness?
We don't currently have any, our internal measures, from where I sit, are really about making sure that we are the most effective with the dollars that we have. So at any given time, the target will vary, depending on where we are, where the city is with respect to crime, where, you know, our numbers of staff, all of that will sort of vary from moment to moment. Of course, our obligation under the three services is safer streets, so our metric is what are we doing to ensure that we are contributing to the safer streets performance outcome, which is part of the, to which the three services apply. So that's our overarching goal, to ensure safer streets. We work with our law enforcement partners to do that, and we try to stay within the constraints of our fiscal dollars and be good fiscal stewards, so that's how we evaluate our success at any given movement. But otherwise, the nuance of it is a moving target, depending on the spike in crime, depending on staffing needs, that kind of thing, depending on budget constraints.
And Mike wanted to add just to it.
Good evening. Mike Shatzow. We evaluate our personnel annually. We keep track of how many cases are being diverted into our various problem-solving courts, drug court, veteran court, prostitution program, and we keep track of how much body worn camera footage is being reviewed by how many people, how many cases are being handled in the office, what the outcomes of those cases are. So we are constantly evaluating information that relate to how well we are doing our job, measured not only in conviction rates, but in our diversion programs, how effective are we being? Are we reaching people? Are we getting good results? And that is, it's a constant effort, and we are constantly monitoring what we are doing by observing our people in court, by observing our people in the offices, by conducting case reviews with people, and getting a handle on how our people are doing and how we are achieving our goals, which are doing justice in each case. And justice looks very different--
Right.
--in the cases that we handle, and that's what we try to make sure, is that we are achieving individual justice in each case.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Councilman Henry?
Sorry, I thought there was someone ahead of me. Okay, all right. The, good evening. This is actually a question from Madam State's Attorney.
Oh, very good.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman.
Well, first of all, I wanted to start by thanking you for your advocacy for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. You, I believe, remain the last of the major participants to still be, you know, working on this. One of the reasons I wanted to thank you for that so far is, my understanding is that the interim Police Commissioner is also a strong supporter of this program, to the point where I think he's going to be looking to expand it, and so I just wanted to check in and make sure that your office is prepared to expand your commitment as well if the Police Department and the Mayor's Office and the Health are all able to find the resources needed to spread this program throughout the city.
Absolutely. It's been highly successful, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. As you know, we have been fully supportive. We asked for additional funding when we went down to Annapolis this past year, and if provided the resources, we are on board to expand it. It has been a successful program, and we hope to be able to expand it, so that it's not just servicing one particular area in Baltimore City, but all of Baltimore City.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget book, it was stated, quote, "The mission of the state's attorney's office is to represent the citizens of Baltimore City in the prosecution of criminal offenses. These duties include investigating and prosecuting misdemeanors, felonies and juvenile petitions, and conducting grand jury investigations. The SAO also provides assistance for victims and witnesses of crime in Baltimore City." End quote. The only difference in that statement this year is that, that appended at the end of that statement is, quote, "supports community engagement efforts through programming for both youths and, youths and adults." Excuse me, I had a My Cousin Vinny moment there. End quote. Could you please explain what that means and how that's related to the mission of the state's attorney's office?
So, what specifically are you asking me? Well, how is it that we're promoting? I didn't, I didn't get the quote. Which one is it?
Sure. So, if you go-
I believe he's referring to the youth-
Supports community engagement efforts.
Community engagement and youth.
Well, one of the things that I've tried to do since taking office is to understand and recognize that we can't continue to just be reactive. At the point that somebody makes a poor decision, they usually come in contact with my prosecutors. We also have to be proactive. And I think that, you know, from my perspective, I've been saying this for three years, we have to figure out a way in which we can actually get to young folks before it's too late. So, what I did was, I've created a community engagement division, thanks to the support of the council, where we have community liaisons that represent our office, that work within a dual capacity role. So, they all, not only in the daytime are they supporting victim witness services or the prosecution of criminals and that they're advocates, but in the, at night, they are the face of the office into the community and also the voice of the community back to the office. When it says that we should support community engagement efforts, I think it's, it's clear why that that would be important. At the end of the day, the most important stakeholder in all of this is the community. And we have to be able to figure out ways in which we can break down those barriers of distrust. When we think about all of the external sort of challenges that we've had in the past three years, from the untimely death of Freddie Gray, to the uprising, to the Department of Justice report that exposed the discriminatory policing practices of the eighth largest police department in the country, to the full implementation of the body worn cameras on our officers, where they were reenacting the discovery and seizure of evidence, to the largest police corruption scandal in the history of the country, to, you know, myself having to work with four police commissioners in three years. These external challenges have been exacerbated, it has exacerbated the distrust among community and law enforcement. And at the end of the day, we cannot effectively do our jobs, which would be the prosecution of criminals, without breaking down those barriers of distrust. So, that's what that means by saying support community engagement efforts through programming for both youth and adults. We have to be able to break down those barriers of distrust.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, second question. There are a hundred and thirty-five ASAs listed in the budget book, and there are an additional thirty-four chief state's attorneys listed. Could you tell us how many of those thirty-four chiefs are prosecuting attorneys? Specifically, do they go to court? And if they don't, what are their duties and responsibilities? And how do these tasks reconcile with the mission of prosecuting crime in the city?
Do you want to answer that? Sure. Thank you. All of the thirty-four chief state's attorneys are prosecuting attorneys who have been with the office for, for any number of years and who either serve in the role of a chief of a particular division, or team captain, or some sort of supervisory capacity. And so, assist with the prosecution of crimes involving their colleague ASAs.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request, over the last fiscal year, the number of cases worked by, in total sum, for the Group A, the hundred and thirty-five ASAs, and then Group B, the thirty-four chief state's attorneys, please.
Okay. Marguerite, did you get that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a follow-up for you.
Our office is divided into eighteen divisions, and they have supervisors, and the supervisors supervise. So, some of the supervisors also try cases. Some of the supervisors are not trying cases, but are supervising their staffs. And the, the divisions are, are good size. We have nineteen lawyers in our homicide division. We have two deputy chiefs, and we have a chief. Our chief is typically not going to court to try cases. When she goes to court, it's to observe the conduct of the people that she's supervising. So, some of our chiefs do try cases every once in a while, but their primary job is to supervise the trial of cases by others. And, and so, Ms. Blake Fall would be the expert about who has the chief title. But in terms of this, of what she said about them being supervisors, our supervisors primarily supervise.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and follow up to that, I'm a bit concerned because I just heard two different answers. And ma'am, your title again? You're Chief Administrative Officer?
That's right.
And you're, and you're Deputy State's Attorney.
I'm Chief Deputy State's Attorney.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. Chief Deputy State's Attorney. I heard two inconsistent answers. The first one was from the CAO, and the CAO stated that those thirty-four individuals are trying cases. And then I was just, excuse me, sir. And then I was just told by the Chief Deputy SAO that those individuals are supervising, and every quote, once in a while, end quote, they try a case. And what I'd like is clarification to reconcile those two answers, so I understand exactly what it is that those thirty-four, pardon me, chief SAOs are actually doing.
I, I believe that what Ms. Blake Fall said was that they were involved in the prosecution of cases, and supervising prosecutors is involved in the prosecution of cases. They conduct case reviews to make sure that the assistant is prepared to try the case. They think through with the assistant and anticipate problems. They think through how the case will be proved. In some divisions, they screen the cases, which we, which are not cases that we make, they're cases that are brought to us by the police. They screen those cases and make decisions about who in their individual division is most appropriate to handle the case. They give advice in divisions about what additional information is needed to prosecute the case. They deal with questions from the court, they deal with questions from assistants, they provide advice as supervisors to help supervise and superintend the conduct of the assistants in the prosecution of cases. And some of them do try cases. Some of them second-chair cases. In the divisions where we have relatively younger lawyers with less experience, they may second-chair them at trials while these lawyers are getting their feet under them. So, they, they definitely assist in the prosecution of cases by supervising and making sure that the office policies and procedures are being followed.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that clarification. That's helpful. Because, again, my original question was how many of these folks are actually going to court? And it's helpful to know that they're not necessarily going to court, but they're playing more of a supervisory or advisory or mentoring role, or whatever the case may be. I would only leave with the comment that a hundred and thirty-five individuals that are ASAs who are going to court and, and actually trying the, these cases in court physically at a, at a clip of ten point two-five million dollars, I don't know that three-point five-seven million dollars for thirty-four individuals who aren't necessarily in the courtroom doing that work is an appropriate use of funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've been joined by Councilman Robert Stokes of the twelfth district. If I can go back to measures for just a second, what, because one of the measures that we are familiar with as it relates to the state's attorney's office is conviction rates. And if I could just be honest, sometimes I don't even understand what goes into, you know, the conviction rates. Can, I mean, I know that our percentage is ninety-two percent. Can you explain what's counted, what's not counted?
Sure.
Okay.
So, a conviction rate, we follow the standards of the Association for Prosecuting Attorneys, first and foremost. And the way that our conviction rate is calculated are those cases that are adjudicated in trial and/or, or plea, or plea out. So, my prosecutors have to be prepared for their cases to go forward in order for the case to plea. If that case goes into court and is adjudicated at trial, you can either win the case or you can lose the case, or anything can happen. If that case proceeds, that is counted in our conviction rate. So, when we look at what happened in, you know, the, the body worn cameras or the GTTF cases, we would not include cases that are dismissed or their unconstitutional policing practices within our, our conviction rate. Those cases that we are legally able to prove are the ones in which we're proceeding upon are the ones that are calculated.
Okay. And so, and so, would those include cases, I guess, that are none, no prost or stat?
They would not include cases that are studded or no prost, right? For a, a number of reasons. There's one, a presumption of innocence until proven guilty. Just because you make an arrest, we wouldn't include that arrest in our conviction rate. So, they, they are separately calculated. We have conviction rates in which those cases are adjudicated in trial, or they're brought to a plea, and then separately, we calculate the conviction rate, I mean, the stats and the no, no process. About a third of the cases that we have to dismiss every year has to do with victim, lack of victim witness cooperation, right? So, they would not be calculated in our conviction rate.
Gotcha. Okay. Councilwoman-
And the, and the experts, The Baltimore Sun just did an article on it, and experts agree with the way that we calculate our conviction rate.
Right. And, and I'm not-
Yeah, no, I know. I was just saying.
I don't know enough to disagree or agree. I'm just-
You were just asking.
Right. It just seems as though there's, there's much conversation about conviction rates-
I get it.
And, and whether the conviction rate used now was the same that has been used in the past. I know that a former state's attorney, Bernstein, I think, used the same, you know, process or, so I just wanted to be clear what-
So, yeah. I mean, The Baltimore Sun just recently did an article and compared my predecessor's conviction rate to my conviction rate, and talked about how there's been, last year, or last year, we had a three percent decline in our conviction rate. And when you consider all of the external challenges that we've been faced with, that I, I referenced earlier, I'm very proud of my prosecutors and the fact that we've been able to break down barriers enough among communities and law enforcement to still have a ninety-two percent felony conviction rate. And again, year to date, our conviction rate is ninety-five percent.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Good evening.
I, first of all, just want to thank you for all of the wonderful things that you, you and your office do in the community. You are a, your community-based efforts are just phenomenal.
Thank you.
And that was, that has not been seen in the past. I, as I go through my communities, I have personal, I'm a personal witness of you having someone that is there at all the community meetings. I mean, you are throughout this city, and your, your office is just an example of how you do that outreach and how it, at this time and effort for this city, you know, every agency needs to be hands-on. We need to find jobs. We need to, you know, it's just, it's just so important. And I also want to thank you. You were one of the first people to, when I hosted the Women's Commission meeting to feel the city, to see if, you know, we needed to reboot this organization again, you were one of the first of two other elected officials there, and you, and a few members of your office have, are also on that commission. So, you know, your outreach efforts and working with juveniles and your youth programs are just wonderful. So, back to the performance measures, I, I know that you do phenomenal work, and data is very important, and data is important to us as well, so we can advocate for funds. And I, I just think it would be good practice, maybe next year, if you could at least, you're not required, but if you could at least bring some spreadsheets of some data of how your, some of your programs are succeeding.
Yes.
Numbers are important to us, too. So, if, that's just a friendly suggestion to, you know, give that to us. It would be just very helpful in, in explaining and securing-
The metrics.
-a number of the things that I know you do in the community. And then the last thing, you, you had mentioned something about law students. I know you participate in the youth works programs and so on, but do you actually have some type of employee-based career path that's connected with a high school and community college?
So, first, as far as the performance, and, and thank you, Madam Vice President, for your leadership on so many different fronts. I have to say thank you. When you talk about the community engagement, I would love to take credit for it, but I have to thank you all, the city council, for allowing us to get the community liaisons back and to bring them back. You know, this is something that I talked about prior to taking office, that has been extremely instrumental in helping the community feel like they can come forward in these types of cases. A number of the tips for some of the big drug takedowns that we, we had, which, the past couple of months, I'm sure you guys can remember, we had twelve different organizations that came down. We've been trying to tackle this fentanyl and opioid crisis. Some of those tips came from the community. You know, I, I just can't thank you enough for allowing us to be able to break down those barriers of distrust. When it comes to performance metrics, I do want you all to know that we do have performance metrics, right? As my deputies have already indicated, we do semi-annual performance measures, right? Where our supervisors are responsible for monitoring the, the way in which our ASAs are performing. And so, I think it's important for you all to know that even though we're not required, we do have metrics in place. And we do utilize data a great deal, where we get reports on what's happening. I, I can say, for example, the disposition forms. What we found when we started collecting the data is that some of our prosecutors, when we first took office, weren't filing the disposition forms, right, in a timely manner. We were probably getting, I can't, I don't remember the first percentage, Mike might remember, but it was really low. The number was low. And because we looked at the data and we were able to say, okay, this is a problem based upon the data, we've increased that. Last year, we had about ninety-eight percent of my prosecutors who went in and followed through with those disposition forms. So, we knew why the cases were being dismissed, or where the problem areas were, right? We were able to implement, one of the problems for some of our no process and, and our stats were that we were having, you know, officers that were failing to appear. We then were able to look at that data and implement, you know, a process in which we automatically notify Baltimore Police Department when officers don't appear in, in, in court. So, that's the, the purpose of those, not only performance metrics, but those metrics and that data that we utilize on a regular basis from a management perspective, right? So that we can see what's, what's, what's efficient and what's not efficient, and how to address it. That's just one example. With regard to, and I can't remember, this, the, the second question was, I didn't write it down.
Do you have any connection with a career path for a student right out of high school or-
Yes.
-the community college?
We do. And what we do is, we have several sort of programs. We have internships that we offer high school students to come in and work during the summertime. And we aggressively recruit Patricia DiMeo and Val DeRix, two of my deputies. They are responsible for the recruitment of the office. They've done an excellent job with the high schoolers who come in and volunteer their time during, and mostly, we get the interns during the summertime. And we just actually, I'm going to be addressing the interns, a second group of interns tomorrow, but we have a group of interns that come in during the summer. But we also have established what we call an honors law clerk program. So, essentially, we recruit all across the country, but we have a really great partnership with the University of Baltimore Law School. And essentially, the, the law clerks are given a full-time position, and they have the ability of having a job with benefits until they get, they pass, as they await their bar results. This allows us, and I, I think that this is important, because this allows us to kind of understand the type of person that you're working with. They not only learn the people in my office, they, they learn the culture of my office, they learn the systems. And by the time that they graduate and have passed the bar, we can then, we, we do a majority of our recruitment from our law clerks. So, it's, it's a training issue for us, and it's more efficient for us to, to recruit. And we do it almost exclusively through our law clerk program.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Madam State's Attorney, for all the work that you do. I just wanted to thank you for you and your office's support of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. It has been excellent working with your office on raising awareness of this issue and working to coordinate between law enforcement agencies. Can you talk about additional resources that your office could use? We had a big announcement today on an indictment. Want to continue to see that occur and, and as we try to work to end human trafficking. Want to continue to see that occur and, and as we try to work to end human trafficking in Baltimore. Can you just talk a little bit more about what could be necessary to achieve that goal?
So, I want to thank you for your leadership around this area and bringing attention to something that is definitely needed. And thank you for attending the press conference. If you haven't seen today, we were able to secure an indictment against an individual who was preying upon the vulnerabilities of minor children. Essentially, he's indicted, and it was a prostitution and human trafficking ring that resulted in impacting more than 25 women, most of whom were, were minors. And it was thanks to the collaboration and the work that we do together. But it is, it comes back down to resources. A great deal of our resources and additional funding, understanding and recognizing the constraints of, of City Hall and the city budget, we, we get from grant funding. And so, you know, you brought this up last year. It is problematic and something that is not guaranteed. But we do, and Lisa actually can talk even more specifically about some of our practices around human trafficking. I think it's really, really important for you to highlight with Kim, Kim Schaub.
Of course. So, we're really proud of our collaboration. We thank you for your leadership. I know I sit on the collaborative and a number of the subcommittees, and we're doing great work. I know there's more to come, especially in the area of victim services. We've talked a little bit about the relocation of victim services, and as you know, Councilman, that will continue to be important as we move forward, especially with these big cases. In addition, training, one of the areas that we focused on was training in our new human trafficking project, which actually grew out of a grant that we collaborated with Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to apply for. And we're currently hiring, our first coordinator didn't move on, but she was a big part of this case and worked with Rena Kate, ASA in the Juvenile Division and Juvenile Services to actually bring this case to fruition. And so, as we continue to, we continue our project under the current grant, we're going to hope that we have sustainable funding moving forward. So, the mayor and City Council will be instrumental in ensuring we do have that coordinator function, the training for our entire office and law enforcement, in addition to your collaborative. And we will just continue to need victim services resources as we build these cases up so that we can ensure success.
Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam State's Attorney, thank you for all that you do for the city. Couple of questions for you very quickly. Can you provide an update to the council? As you know, the GTTF case is a big thing for me, around how many cases that it's impacted for you? And if we're done assessing, how many more may be impacted by, by the actions of those individuals? We won't call them gentlemen.
So, and I appreciate your question and your leadership, Councilman. This has been a really big problem for us. I can tell you that it's expended a great deal of resources from the first seven federally indicted officers. We've gone and successfully looked through and assessed, and this is not something that you can just go in and say the officer's involved in the case because some of these individuals that have been convicted are really dangerous individuals. So, we make an assessment based upon the materiality of those officers. If the officer was a material witness, then we are not going to proceed on those cases. That means not only were the open and pending cases, we're not going to proceed upon and we're going to get dismissed, but we also went back on our own sort of fruition and on our own sort of resources and filed motions to vacate and have reached out to council to try to coordinate a time to set in hearings and to argue these motions. And, you know, it was brought up, you know, about the supervisory role of some of my prosecutors. I can tell you that my deputies are the ones that are going into court and actually arguing these cases. And it's, it's drained a great deal of resources. Since the trial, there were about a dozen other officers that were implicated as a result and having credibility issues. And unfortunately, our preliminary list of those officers, and just looking at that, were thousands, upwards near almost 3,000 cases. We've been able to successfully, thanks to my deputy Janice Bledsoe, who does the work herself, is still a supervisor and has various units that she's responsible for. She actually is the one who made the assessment, and we've been able to work with the Public Defender's Office and to narrow that down, that list down, to start to do those preliminary sort of assessments. However, we're still down to almost, it's about 1,700 cases. So, what we're gonna have to do, and we've kind of pulled the resources and tried to figure out what, how we can go about this process, is that we were gonna contractually hire some law clerks and help us pull these files and start to look for these. Again, this is not an easy sort of process. So, it's extremely time-consuming. And so, we are, we've got an approval to try to get some contractual law clerks in to kind of assist us. But this is going to be a, a very time-consuming, time-consuming project and a, a time-consuming task.
And Madam State's Attorney, if you, if you guys could provide to the, the committee, just like a list or a synopsis of all the cases that have already been thrown out, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. We have, we have several. We can pull them and get them to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. You know that I think that the work that Ms. Bledsoe does is always awesome and above reproach. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can dovetail on Councilman Scott's question. Does the State's Attorney's Office have a police integrity unit or?
Yes, we have a police integrity unit.
So, so what role did that, did that unit or could that unit have played in the Gun Trace Task Force?
So, I'm gonna leave that up. Jan, you want to answer that question, since she's over police integrity? Do you want to come up here?
Do you want me at the podium? Right here is good? Okay. So, our police integrity unit has worked with me directly to look at and to collect information concerning the large amount of cases that we're gonna have to review. The police integrity unit is in charge of prosecuting police officers as well as being responsible for the new procedure that we have implemented concerning the re-review of Internal Affairs files. We did that in coordination with the city solicitor, and we now have a Giglio checklist that the police integrity unit is also responsible for. That checklist has generated at least over 100 forms every week that we need to process. So, the police integrity unit helps me with looking at some of the cases, but their primary responsibility is charging officers, investigating officers, reviewing IA files, disclosing IA files, and now processing Giglio checklists. And then, as a result of what the checklist shows you, ordering those IA files, to review those IA files to see if there's anything that the State's Attorney's Office has to disclose during discovery.
But could that, could that unit have discovered the actions of these officers earlier? They don't play a role in that?
Are you talking about the GTTF officers? I don't think that that's something that I would comment on.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, I mean, we, we're talking about internal affairs files that are not public knowledge.
Okay.
So, although we review files, you have to understand that a large amount of the information that we get from the police department was not given to us.
Okay.
And so, as we go through our Giglio checklist and we go through now a very transparent process of, of reviewing IA files, we have been able to go through and see more and more information concerning the police department. I, I think people misunderstand that, that the police department IA files are just automatically sent to us.
Okay.
They are not, and it hasn't been, it's just been a year that we've actually gotten suspension lists every month as well as external complaints.
Okay.
So, we don't actually have the key to go unlock IA files.
Gotcha.
And I think it's also important to note that the extraordinary sort of crimes that the GTTF officers committed, you know, burglarizing people's and drug dealers' homes, redistributing drugs onto the street, you know, putting ski masks on their faces and breaking into people's homes. The outrageousness of that is not something that we were aware of. I don't think that the public was even made aware of it until it came out. But since the GTTF, right, we, we understand the need for reform, and what we've done is to exercise leadership. And so, you asked, what is, what are the responsibilities of the police integrity unit? They prosecute crimes and they provide disclosures to defense counsel. So, if there's a credibility issue for an officer, we would provide disclosures. What was happening before was that we weren't made privy to getting all of the information. We've now changed that, right? And we've made a process and we've, we've developed a, you know, a relationship with the city solicitor, an agreement with the city solicitor so that we're getting that information, and we have a checklist. Jan spoke about the Giglio checklist. There are certain questions that we're asking the police officers so that we can know whether or not they're, we should be disclosing their IA files, we should be requesting their IA files so that we can get the full contents of it. So, and unfortunately, Fraternal Order of Police have instructed their officers not to follow that or to answer our questions, right? So, that is, again, time-consuming. It's, it's time-consuming for my prosecutors. In any event, what we do and what we've worked out with the solicitor is that, once we get those files, we are now saying, we're not going to argue this in, in court anymore. What we're gonna do is that we have nothing to hide. We're gonna provide this to defense counsel, and you can come over here and you can look at it, you're for yourself. You, you don't have the ability of, of making copies of it, but you, you have the ability of looking for yourself to see if there's any sort of credibility issues that you want to raise. We would then go into court and argue whether or not that's relevant, right, and the admissibility of it. But we, we're, this is a transparent process. We have nothing to hide. So, that's one, one thing that we've put into place, those IA records. The other thing that we've put into place as a result of the GTTF trials and not just having to play cleanup, but also, we, we put in to place the, we had an internal notification system, which essentially, if police officers have credibility issues, right? We now disclose that information, and we have an agreement with the city solicitor. We can't control what happens with, with those officers, right? All we can say is that this is an officer that has credibility issues. And it's then on to the law department to determine whether or not they're gonna allow that, that officer to stay on or remain on the street or to remain, you know, arresting people so that those credibility issues may be brought up. So, we've now have an agreement with the city solicitor to also provide that internal notification list to them as well.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Scott? Oh, okay. Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. I'm just curious if you can talk about the folks that work in your office, where they live at, and if you can also get us a chart to the committee of where these folks, what the makeup is of the agency.
So, when you say where they live, are they Baltimore city residents? So, do you know-
If you can give us a percent-
We have, we can provide that to you.
That would be great.
That's fine. I mean, I don't know that off the top of my head, but what I can say is that one of the things that we've made a concerted effort is to increase diversity in my office. And so, I can tell you that we have more women. We have about, our office is made up of about 60% women. We have more African-Americans that work in my office, as well as more Asian Pacific Americans under this administration. So, I'm extremely happy with our, you know, concerted efforts to increase diversity. But we will get that information to you as far. But one of the things I do want to note is that we lobbied when it was brought up for the police department to get the tax credit for living in the city of Baltimore. One of the things that my Policy and Legislative Affairs Director did was to lobby and say, hey, can we include our prosecutors because they have a vested interest in trying to also be from the city and, and serving their community? And if we can get some sort of support on housing credit or whatever it was, tax incentive, that could be helpful in recruiting more local prosecutors. But we were unsuccessful in, in our, in our attempt.
I wish I would have known about that because I am, I really believe that folks who work in the Baltimore city should live in Balt, should live in Baltimore city, so.
Well, I think, I think there's a benefit. At the end of the day, like, you're able to connect with the community in which you serve, and, and that's reflective of the jury that you're in front of. And so, that was one of the things that we tried to lobby that we were unsuccessful doing.
Thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to go back to the discussion of performance measures for a second. First off, Bob, you mentioned that there's not a requirement in outcome-based budgeting with the performance measures that elected officials do not need to have performance measures in their agency budgets. A quick scan of the mayorality-related functions within city government, specifically the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Mayor's Office of Human Services indicates that they do in fact have performance measures. I wanted to double-check. Of course, we heard a lot of this last week over the 50-plus hours of budget hearings we heard. I'd like to see budget measures for this agency as well as any other agency that does not have them for next year's budget. Is that something that, that we can work on?
So, I, I definitely think it's worth re-engaging with our, the agencies that don't have them to get measures. I know that some of those agencies are measuring something, and, you know, frankly, sometimes it, sometimes harms their case if they ask for more money to try to give context on what that investment will get them. So, I definitely think it's worth doing that. Our practice has been that we weren't able to compel the, the offices with an elected official at the head. So, mayoralty, city council, sheriff, state's attorney, those other offices are under the purview of the mayor, so we've done performance measures with those. But for those handful that are missing, I think it's, it's definitely worth re-engaging and see if we can get those in the budget for context for next year.
Thanks. And I guess my point was, is that if the mayor can take the lead on it, other elected officials in the city should be held to the same standard in terms of reporting on those performance measures. Again, when we're looking at a requested appropriation, $35.6 million, that's a significant amount of money. And I think that the council has an obligation to review those performance measures, if they're available, to be able to determine whether or not the agency is meeting its goals. Mr. Chairman, my second question, just going back to the performance metrics or measures, whatever we want to call them. Again, I heard three different answers. First, from the CIO, I heard that there are outcome-based performance measures. I then heard from the Deputy Chief State's Attorney that there are not performance metrics. And then I heard from the State's Attorney that there are performance measures. I'm not sure what the correct answer here is, but if there's one person, there's one person from this agency that can list for me what those performance measures are, I'd really appreciate that.
We'll get back to you and provide it to you.
I'm not sure, but I, I've heard several individuals say that there are performance metrics. What are those perform, is there anyone here that knows what those performance metrics are, that can describe those to me?
Again, we've already kind of described to you what those performance metrics are, but we can provide you the actual sort of performance evaluations that we give to our employees, if that's what you're looking for.
No, I'm, I'm not looking for performance evaluations for specific employees or classes of employees. I'm looking for performance metrics for the agency as a whole. Are there any performance metrics that this agency uses? And if there are, is there anyone in the room today that can tell me what one of those performance metrics are?
So, again, I think that it's been highlighted, but we can reiterate it for you if you'd like. Mike, you want to come back up here and explain it to the councilman again?
Yeah. If someone could just, Mr. Deputy Chief State's Attorney, if you could just explain to me, like, list one of those performance metrics for me. List what the goal is and what you actually performed at for this previous fiscal year.
We have performance measures, as you're defining the term, or as you seem to be using the term. I think we have performance measures that show how many people get considered for diversion programs, how many people go into the diversion programs, whether they perform successfully or not. We have those kinds of measurements. We have measurements for each assistant state's attorney who's in a felony unit about their individual caseload and their individual performance. So, we have those outcomes available to us. We have information about how the office is doing as a whole in terms, we have measures of how many cases we have. We have measures of how many, how much body-worn camera footage has to be reviewed and how often we're reviewing them. We have measures of the outcomes of cases. We have measures, as Mrs. Mosby was describing, for the cases that are non-prost. They are categorized, and we know how many are being non-prost because the witness doesn't show up, how many are non-prost because the police officer doesn't show up, how many are non-prost because there isn't a legally sufficient basis to go forward with a case. So, as you're using the term "performance measures," we have lots of measures. We have lots of access to information that tells us what we are doing and how we are doing it. So, we do have those informations, and I hope that was responsive to your question.
That was certainly responsive. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a, a listing of all the performance metrics that the agency as a whole uses, whether it's diversion or outcomes of cases.
Can you provide those measures for us? Can you provide, can you provide those measures for us? And this is, I just want to be clear, this, this line of questioning isn't any different than what we've done for all of the agencies. And we, and quite frankly, in some of the instances, we were quite surprised that some of the agencies didn't have performance measures. I remember specifically Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice didn't even have some measures, City Stat, City Stat doesn't even have measures. And, you know, how do we effectively as a committee make a decision as it relates to budget and the effectiveness of a, of an agency without those metrics and without those measures? So it, it is a critical function to what, to what we try to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to point out, we've asked the same question of the agencies all throughout last week. There are agencies that got back to, or that said to us during the hearings last week that we will get back to you on what those performance measures are. And again, I just wanted to be able to frame the context of how you all are responding to the question about whether or not there's performance metrics. I think it's perfectly reasonable for you to provide those in writing. And again, I would reiterate, these are the same questions that we're asking agencies across the board, as the Budget Director and the Mayor's Office of Government Relations will attest to, that they heard last week throughout 50 hours of budget hearings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I wasn't, I didn't hear whether we could get.
We can, we can get back to you, yes. We'll get back to you.
Okay, with, with the list of, of measures?
I mean, there, again, there are a number of measures and of performance that we measure, so I'm not certain exactly what you're looking for, but we can follow up in any way and, and we'll address your concerns.
Mr. Chairman, so absent, absent a complete list of the performance metrics that the agency uses, I would be happy to send something on behalf of the committee with a list of performance metrics, at least as I understand, as the Deputy Chief SAO has just described them, Deputy Chief SA has just described them, requesting what the goals are for each of those specific metrics, as well as what the performance for the previous fiscal year is for each of those. If that satisfies your question.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that, but I think we should allow for Madam State's Attorney to send us the, the list of measures that they have. And then if that doesn't occur, then maybe we can, you know, use your suggestion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to concur to my colleague's earlier point about having performance measures for every agency in the budget, just as long as next year our performance measures are around legislation and not potholes, I'll be okay with it.
Thank you.
If I could just follow up and add a comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to sort of give you some greater context, and I know you've come to understand it in the course of last year's, last week's 50 hours plus of testimony. Outcome-based budgeting is a process that we have not been involved in for the last, at least since the beginning of this administration. And so we have not been asked to provide performance metrics and we would need clarity on exactly what outcome-based budgeting metrics look like. What is it that the metrics are supposed to measure for purposes of that particular way of, of measurement? And so that will define for us exactly what metrics we provide to you versus, we have internal metrics which, which we have referenced, but outcome-based budgeting sets certain expectations with respect to those metrics. And those are the expectations that the other agencies have had to sort of fall in line with. And we would ask for the opportunity to be given information about what is to be measured under performance-based budgeting so that we can sort of justify our budget for 2020. Does that make any sense? As opposed to just random metrics just out of anywhere?
You're absolutely right. And I believe working with our Budget Department and City Stat that we can bring clarity to that. You know, it, it could be something as simple as if, if there were measures in place, it would reflect the, the need to invest in more community engagement, which is proven to be effective, or the need to, to invest in more witness protection. And if, if those were measures that we were constantly looking at, there would already be the data and justification for those investments. So that, that's where we're going.
Understood, understood.
Being that there are no further questions, I want to thank you, Madam State's Attorney and your team for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for your continued service to the city. You all play a vital role in the, in the safety of our city and we, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Appreciate you.
So that concludes just the panel presentation. This committee is not recessed yet. While I return the chair of the, this committee to Councilman Costello.
We have Bill 18. Let me take a step back. First off, Bob, it's been a pleasure to work with you this year. I feel like we have certainly improved on a lot of the, the process from the previous year, and I think a large part of that is attributable to your partnership with this council in taking our requests and our questions seriously and helping to prepare for these hearings in a very thoughtful manner. And I think I speak for all my colleagues when I say we appreciate the level of responsiveness from you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So we have three bills in front of us, colleagues. The first is Bill 18-0233, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019. Is there a motion to move that bill?
Move.
Motion by Pinkett, is there a second? Second by Middleton? Colleagues, please feel free to explain your votes. Costello votes yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
I'm sorry, is this the ordinance of estimates for the whole city or the one for the school system?
This is the ordinance of estimates for the city.
Pass.
Councilman Henry abstains. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Scott? Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed? This bill passes with six yeses, zero no's, and one abstention. Next up is Council Bill 18-0234, Annual Property Tax for Fiscal Year 2019. Is there a motion to move the bill?
Can I ask a question first?
Uh, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Councilman Schleifer?
What, what is the property tax rate for this year? I didn't see the, the final thing.
It's, it's $2.248 per $100 of assessed value, so it's about 2.24%.
Okay. And what was it, what was it last year again?
It was the same last year.
That's, it didn't drop at all?
No, the, 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 the rate has not changed. If you remember from the overview, the additional credit we've been giving it is what we call the Targeted Homeowner's Tax Credit, which is for owner-occupied properties, but that's in the form of a credit. The actual base rate has not changed.
Gotcha. Yeah, we gotta change that.
Are you good on your questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good on my questions. I'm not, I don't love the tax rate, but yes, thank you.
So there was a motion by Councilman Pinkett, is there a second? There was a motion by Councilman Pinkett on Bill 18-0234. Costello is a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
C.
It's a yes. Schleifer?
Yes.
Yes. Sneed?
Yes.
That bill passes 7-0. Then Council Bill 18-0240, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019. Is there a motion to move the bill? Motion by Pinkett, second by Scott. Costello is yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
All three of these bills will come out on second reader at the next scheduled city council meeting. Thank you very much. We're now adjourned.